Neighborhood Board 14. Sorry for the delay, but we had a little problem with the Internet because the city forgot to pay its bill. Just a couple administrative announcements. Please turn off your cell phones if you have your cell phones with you. And if you do want to speak, you have to raise your hand. And for those of you in the audience, come up to the microphone right up there, okay? And those of you who are on WebEx, raise your hands so our neighborhood assistant can see you and I can recognize you. I want to thank all of you for coming. We have an overflow crowd. I think I know what it's all about. I'm going to tell you that in giving testimony today, according to our rules, you have one minute to speak in regards to whatever subject matter you have. I mean, about one minute. Don't worry, if you go over, I'm going to cut you off. Okay? So, thank you for coming. I know we're all in, we have the same issue up at the top of Aleva Heights, so we'll be hearing from all of you. At this time, I want to ask the neighborhood assistant to do a roll call, see if we have a forum.
Okay. Higa.
Yep.
Apu.
Here.
Here.
Mitsuda.
Not here.
Na'oa Ota.
Present.
Peng.
Here.
Yamamoto.
Present.
White.
Not here yet.
Nita.
Here.
Cantril.
Here.
Christian.
Here.
Chen members present.
And the chair is present too.
Chair. Sorry.
Thank you. First on the agenda, Honolulu Police Department, are you here? Honolulu Fire Department? Okay, let's skip to Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening everyone.
Oh, good evening. Go ahead.
Can you hear me clearly, sir?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, good. Let me give you guys the stats for the month of September. Again, I'm sorry, my name is Lieutenant Creighton Hatiko. I'm one of the nighttime commanders here at the Kalii Police Station. For September, we had zero aggravated assaults. We had four auto thefts, six burglaries, one robbery, no sex assaults, two simple assaults, 18 minor thefts, and six thefts from vehicles. Some highlights from that, the burglaries occurred on North Kuakini Street, Mamalo Street, and North School Street. The car break-ins happened at Monte Cook Place, Peter Buck Street, and also multiple ones on North School. Auto thefts occurred in the 1,000 block of Lana Kila Avenue, and two times on Kuakini Street. The robbery that I mentioned, it was during a juvenile fight, and it occurred on the 1,700 block of Lana Kila Avenue early in the month. In that case, the complaint was withdrawn by the victim. For whatever reason, the parents decided not to prosecute, so that was dropped. I think we had a suspect identified in that case, but for whatever reason, the family decided not to pursue it. Tip of the month, you may have noticed on HonoluluPD.org, the Crime Mapping link is missing. What they're trying to do right now is they're trying to push, we've developed what we call our data dashboard, where you can find statistics, actually totals about crimes that occur in your neighborhoods. Personally, I feel like Crime Mapping provides a little more information as it gives you the addresses, the rough addresses where it occurred, and the times. So, apparently, you guys can still go onto CrimeMapping.com, and it'll ask you what state you're dealing with, and you just input Hawaii. And then it'll ask you what department you're dealing with, and the only option is Honolulu PD. And you click that, and Crime Mapping functions the exact same way it was when we had it linked to the website. So you can still find out the up-to-date information about criminal activity in your guys' specific areas. Open up to any questions or comments, sir.
Any questions from the board? Tom?
Yes. You know, on September 24th, you had a weapons incident on Ahi Ahi Place, that is just above the senior center. Can you give us more information about that, about the weapons?
Ahi Place. I'm not sure why that didn't pop up in my search. I'll make note of that, and I'll let you guys know. What other information do you have, sir? Just the address?
Yeah, well, the incident number was 2409-24TAC-0943. And the other question I have is, you know, what is the so-called definition of aggravated assault and simple assault?
Aggravated assault is the one that we consider a felony. So aggravated usually involves some kind of substantial or serious injury, or if a deadly weapon or some kind of weapon was used. So that's what makes it aggravated. Other than that, assault, a simple assault is something where just you feel pain.
Yeah, because the thing is that we had two aggravated assaults and one single simple assault. I mean, for our area, because of our so-called senior citizens, can we have this, or can we prevent any of this assault? Or this has just become an argument between two parties or two friends or whatever?
It's usually acquaintances where the aggravated occurs. If we had something where someone was randomly attacking people, you guys would be, you know, one of the first to know. Yeah, and nothing like that is happening right now.
Yes, and thank you about the Crime Mapping.
Oh, no, no problem, sir.
I usually go on Crime Mapping to keep myself informed of our neighborhoods, so...
Oh, good.
Yes. You have to search. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
I'll let you know about the weapons if I can find out anything, sir.
Let me ask, Don specifically, in regard to the weapon incident, where was the location approximately?
The location was in the housing area, and it's above Lana Kila Senior Center. The address was 16 block of Ahi Ahi Place. That's the road that is in front of the center. And then the thing was, I think when you go up the road to the so-called housing area...
Okay, I'll put it on the agenda for next.
Officer Hatiko.
Yes.
Hi, this is Walin Christian. How are you, Creighton?
Hey, hi Walin, how you doing?
I'm good. Hey, Christian.
Sure.
You know, I live on North Kuakini Street, and that gentleman that died from the car running over him on October 2nd or 3rd.
Oh, yeah.
What is the current status of that case?
It's still being investigated as an accident. It wasn't, the hospital had been dealing with that person for a while. He had been discharged, and kind of was refusing to leave the property. So there were calls earlier about a person lying in the roadway. And then when officers were going to respond to deal with that, that's when we got the call that someone had been run over in the roadway. Yeah. So it was somebody mentally distressed, that sort of situation.
Okay, was that a homeless person, or did he have a residence?
I didn't, I didn't get the specifics from what I saw. It wasn't any familiar to me. I know most of our regulars, so I'm not sure if he was just a regular person or not. Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have the specifics on that.
Any questions from the board? Anybody from the audience? Any questions for HPD? Yes, Bert? You're going to have to come up to them. Also, the lady in the back of you, you wanted to see, asked a question, the mic too. And if this has to do with the top of Aleva Heights, you have to wait. Now, yeah, we're going to get to that at resident concerns. Yeah. I'm going to ask them to stick around. Lieutenant, are you still there?
Yes, sir. Yes, I'm here.
I want you to stick around, okay?
Okay, no problem.
We have an issue up at the top of Aleva Heights, which you should hear about.
Okay.
Because they're going to ask you some questions, okay?
Okay, no problems.
So can you stick around, okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'll be right here.
Any other questions besides the top of Aleva Heights? Any from the WebEx? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Border Water Supply, Iris, are you here? Iris? Nope. Next on the agenda is filling of vacancies. We have a vacancy in Sub District 4, which is near the Kuakini area. Any volunteers? Do you want to everybody jump up a little once? Okay. All right, we're moving on. Resident concerns, I'm going to start off with Bert. Bert, now, why don't you give us an overview of what it is that we have so many residents here have a concern? And then what I'm going to ask is, if you, as a resident, would like to add to what the previous, I guess, resident is going to say, then come up to the mic. And I'm going to give you one minute. And Lieutenant, if you can pay attention. Thank you.
I am, sir.
Oh, thank you. That scared them away. Bert?
Chair, members of the board, I think I know most of you from the Neighborhood Security Watch and from the former hall time, it's all issue. Anyway, I received a number of calls, we did try to start a Neighborhood Watch, and it was sort of working, from residents, from residents complaining about recent robberies occurring in their garages and homes, and a person trying to enter another home. So it started happening, or I got reports of things happening at the start of October. And so we're still trying to assemble more information as to dates, times, locations, what was stolen, and HPD, where they called. And we invited a number of residents who, it kind of snowballed because then everyone started recording it. So it's still a work in progress, but I believe there are a number of residents here who wanted to just confirm that it happened to them and when.
Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker, before I, while you're coming up, do you have those videos familiar? What I want to do is, after all I've spoken, I want to show some videos that were sent to me by Bert. And so we'll get, now you're going to hear it, then you're going to see some of these individuals. So Lieutenant, pay attention. We want to show you some pictures, maybe you recognize them. Will you please identify yourself and then go and testify?
Good evening, my name is Sabrina Montgomery, longtime resident, I live at the top of Aleva, retired HPD officer, District 5. Okay, the reason I'm here tonight is, we have an ongoing current problem. So far, by talking to residents, you know, roughly the last few months, and basically they're only stealing from garages, refrigerators, along with other items. They're hitting houses from the top of Aleva by the gate, from the cul-de-sac, down to Apila, Simple Cases, down to Napo Eo Park, down to Mamalo. Now, the Mamalo residents, they would walk past my house, I've been talking to them, and they told me they have a whole separate issue with the homeless, stealing from them. Basically, stealing food and other items from their garages. They're using the drainage covert as a transportation thing to access the mountain. And from Mamalo, it goes through Styline, down to Pukalama Canal, I believe. Anyway, Janice, who could not be here, she put a lot of this, yeah, she talked to numerous people, numerous defendants. But basically, they, sometimes they're hidden, and we're afraid, that's another issue, we're afraid of fire. We have a lot of forest trees, I did contact the HNLR, and they will make contact with Waupu Country Club, Napo Eo Park, the city, Border Water. But we're afraid of them camping, smoking, or starting fires up there. They hide, and they're also hiding in that drainage thing. That's why when the police come and drive around, they can't, they're not seeing you. And basically, they've been hitting, unless somebody else can correct you, they've been hitting at night. But they walk around during the day to sweep the houses that they want to hit. We have one person that's very, very active. We have photos of this person, we can pass it around. Camp School is also involved in this, because so much people are going down to Camp School. And so far, from what we heard, the security at Camp School is aware of this.
Thank you. Before the next speaker, I've already notified the representatives from the city and the state. So for your information, Councilmember Tam and Representative Takunuchi, and also Senator Kim, who's, it's her jurisdiction of Aleva Heights, they know all about this incident. So when you testify, they're listening. And my understanding too, that we do have a representative from Senator Kim's office and Councilmember Tam's office. So at the very end, I'm going to ask, which one of the three representatives is going to take the lead? Because it seems like it's a cross-section of jurisdiction. And I hate when the city points to the state, the state points to the city, and they point to somebody else. As it is now, I think it's, I think it's Councilmember Tam is taking the lead. I don't know, but Representative Takunuchi, you know, you can get together with Senator Kim and also Councilmember Tam, since you're the only live person here. And then you can coordinate and tell us, you could call, tell me, who's going to be the lead person, so we can have only one point of contact. And he or she can, you know, coordinate with all of the various entities. Is that okay? All right, thank you. Next, please.
My name is Jenny Rosario, and I live on Mamalo Street. And on September 16th, about 10:45 PM, I was awakened by a prowler in my garage who stole my son's refrigerator. And then on the 17th, when I went to wash clothes, I noticed there was a whole bunch of items in my washroom. And I called the cops, and little did I know that all those items that was found there on Tuesday belonged to my tenant. When I notified him on Friday, because I didn't know it belonged to him, he called the cops, and he made a report, and they tested for fingerprints and stuff. But we got the stuff back to him. My son, I got my son's refrigerator back. And then on September 22nd, I saw the same guy approach my neighbor's house and take a box from his porch. I thought it was a UPS box, but I'm not sure. But they also hit my other neighbor's house. So, yeah, it was the three of us in that little driveway.
Let me ask you a question. When you called the police, what did the police do?
They sent the officers up, and we heard, I heard noise in my neighbor's house, in the kitchen. Nobody lives in that house for about four or five years. And so they went into the house to check the air condition, what's on in the room. But nobody like, as I said, lives in the house for about four, five years. And then they checked the back door, and they said nobody was in there. But later on, the lady is here, she can explain to you what happened. Evidently, the homeless guy was using, making himself comfortable with cushions in the house, and watching movies and stuff like this. Just having a relaxing time in there.
Did the police say anything in response? Did they do anything? I mean, did they say that we're going to do anything to try and prevent this or stop this?
They, I found, I noticed, when he took, when he left my garage, took my blue trash bin out, and I followed him up the driveway. And when I got up to the driveway, I looked to the right and to the left of Mamalo Street to see if I could see him. I couldn't see him. And then I heard noise behind my neighbor's garage, behind, behind his van. So as I was descending the driveway, he was coming out of the garage with the bin. So I stopped him, and I asked him what he was doing, and he said, oh, he's homeless, and he lives over in the tree. There's a tree behind our house. And so I stopped him, and I looked in the rubbish bin, there was nothing in there. But when the cops came, I took the bin back to my house, and that was the time I found all my son's things in the refrigerator on the table. So I looked where the refrigerator was, and it was missing. So I went back up to the cops, and I told him my son's refrigerator is missing. So he went behind the van to look, and he says, is it black? And I said, yes. Then he said, here it is. So the policeman carried it back down to the house for me.
Okay, but the police didn't do anything besides just check, did they?
They checked inside her house.
Okay. Did they say what they could do to prevent this or stop this? No? Okay, I kind of figured that out. Oh, before you leave.
Did they make a, did you get a police report number?
They didn't make a police report.
There was no police report number?
I guess, but they might have taken a number from my neighbor downstairs, my tenant. He made a police report, so he might have a number.
Okay. Let me ask you a question. I was just handed this picture over here. Is this the guy?
No.
All right, you can come and identify this guy. Any question? I'm going to let everybody talk. If you've got any questions, hold on to your questions, okay? The next speaker? Bert gave me a copy of this picture, and as a matter of fact, this is a picture where I, we saw on a video. And doesn't it look homeless to me? Yes.
Good evening, my name is Kristy McPherson, and I live at the top of Aleva Heights on Keela Keela. And I just wanted to say that Janice has been doing an amazing job talking to all of our neighbors, and I want to, you know, mahalo her for that. I did, in the middle of the night, I think it was a couple weeks ago, my husband and I heard this loud yelling and shouting, and we were wondering what was going on because it happened right next door, and I know no one lives there. So I went out, kind of sheepishly went out, to see what was going on. And apparently, that man in that photo, I identify him as someone who was in the garage, and my, our neighbors up the street, I guess he had stolen from them. And so one of the, the father had run after him, and they ended up next door in our, in the garage. So I heard that, and then one of our neighbors called the HPD, and I have to say, they responded. And there were about five of them that showed up several minutes later. And he said, has anyone been shot? And I said, no, no one's been shot. But I guess it sounded like that. So I just wanted to say too, that I do work with severely mentally ill. I'm very familiar with the way they walk and their gait, and that man is clearly SMI. So I want to just, you know, the way he walked off, I said, oh, this man is schizophrenic, or, you know, he has some kind of mental illness. So I just want us to be aware of that, that what we really need is housing for people that do these kinds of things. And as upsetting as it is for it to happen to us, and to have things stolen, I also want to remind us that the answer to all of this is really housing. So, anyway, thank you.
Any questions? I'm sure the state and the city paying attention to this. Next person, please come up.
My name is Diane Osumi, and I...
Pull the mic down a little lower, so we can hear you.
My name is Diane Osumi, and I live on the 1900 block of Aleva Heights. And my property abuts this piece of property that supposedly the parkland recreation is supposed to take care of. It's like a mess. It's lots of dry foliage, and it scares me because every holiday, there are people in the park shooting out firecracks. I have reached out to Councilman's office. I've had three promises broken. I've given up, and I don't know where to turn, because it's really a fire.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, at this time, what I'm going to do is, familiar? Can you play it? Can we dim the lights? No. Yes. Say again? Yeah, can we? Well, how do you do that? We're going to dim the lights temporarily, so you can see homemade videos. And I'm going to be giving this photograph to Representative Takunuchi, because she's the only one here, and she can share it with Tam and Kim. I want to thank Bert for sending me, familiar, to our neighborhood assistant, being able to show it to you. Is this the guy in the picture? Is that the guy? Okay. Is this yours? No. It's, whose house is this? Yours? Yeah, Bert? Oh, the entrance to Napo Eo Park, okay. Okay, that's okay. Just curious. Thank you, Bert. Can we bring the lights back on? Thank you very much. Any other residents want to add anything to this? Yes? Okay, let's finish this one up first. Okay, no questions from the board? Any questions?
Hey, Walin.
Hi, Creighton. Can I have a couple questions? Because I believe that when we're going on as a cumulative, I see two problems, and maybe Jenna can kind of take note on this, and we can send it to the other representatives. Number one, squatters. I heard that this gentleman was in this house making house. What, besides HRS, what can HPD do pertaining to squatters? That's number one. Number two, when you have a burglary, breaking and entering, robbery, what is the stipulation when the HPD is called? In this situation, I believe a young lady said that HPD didn't do anything. Why? And what should they be doing so that the public... Why and what should they be doing so that the public know? Go ahead.
Um, so in terms of squatters, uh, one of the issues is a lot of times when we discover someone in a house, we have to establish who's the actual owner of the house. Because that's the person who has to become the complainant. So a lot of times it's a witness that sees the person in the house, but for whatever reason, we cannot get in touch with or get the person who actually owns the house to come down to push the complaint. Um, but in most situations, we're gonna run the person for warrants, um, NCIC check to see if he's wanted anywhere else. Um, so in those situations, we, we don't, we don't want them to feel like they get off scot-free if we cannot get them for the, uh, being in a dwelling, uh, when no one's there. Unfortunately, the state law, if it's a, if it's an unoccupied home, they won't count it as a rob-, uh, as a burglary, excuse me. Um, it has to be someplace that is being actually habitated. Um, and also, um, in terms of what the lady said, I, I cannot speak for the officers that were there. Um, but I do know that my officers assigned to that, your guys' particular sector, they're, they're not the type to shirk, um, any type of work, especially if they catch somebody. Um, so I don't, it, people are not seeing exactly what was said because my officers are not gonna be the ones to, to try to shirk and, and try to just push it off. So I, I wanna know exactly what was said, um, what, what the officer said and that sort of thing so that people don't make the assumption that the police didn't do anything. My guys, um, my sergeants and myself, um, that's something we, um, we're very passionate about. You know, we're not, we're not officers who don't do anything. We, we live in these, we live in the same districts as you folks, so the people who are there are making problems, they're problems for us as well. So we wa- we wanna try and solve it.
Lieutenant, let me just say that we're not here to criticize HPD. I have a, the foremost respect for the HPD and I think all of us do. But we're here just to, to cite the facts and hopefully to resolve this issue. Donald, you have something?
I know. Can I, can I say something else too, sir?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, unfortunately, um, I don't know if you guys are aware, but last month, um, we did a huge sweep of the areas in, um, around, um, the Costco area, that corridor around Nimitz. And we cleared the streets of the homeless in those areas. So unfortunately, a lot of these, um, people who were, were living there got driven to other places where, um, there, there's not as much police pressure. Um, what I would suggest to everyone, if you see someone strange in your neighborhood, you don't have to wait until they do something wrong. If it seems like, oh, I don't know who this guy is, you call in, you say there's a suspicious person in my neighborhood and an officer will be sent. We'll go and check them out.
Thank you, that's good to know. Donald?
On this, um, what I wanted to know is the person who saw the self-help robbery, um, did he file a complaint with the police department? Because the thing is that if you don't file a complaint, the police aren't gonna do anything. And as you folks have a problem, you folks gotta be a little bit more strict. And sorry, but you have to go down to the police station and file a complaint. And hopefully, the person, they said, has some kind of mental illness. Maybe the police can help and, you know, get this thing resolved because what I'm hearing is you folks seeing these people, the police came, but I didn't hear anything about arrests. And you folks have to remember, when you, when they are arrest, that person has to file a complaint. Because if you don't file a complaint, the police cannot do anything. So if you folks have a problem, I know Bert has a good, uh, neighborhood watch over there. So the thing is that, um, if you see any suspicious person and all that, like they said, call the police department. But if they have, you know, they did break the law, I'm sorry, but the resident has to go down and make a complaint.
I think that's good, that's a good advice, thank you, uh, Don.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, the, the videos that you shown was, um, was a case generated from those videos?
Yes, I don't know, I do not know.
Okay.
The videos were just given to us. Uh, what I said, we do have access to the videos, you know, I said before. And, um, what I wanna do now, unless there are any questions from the board or any from the residents? Question, Henry?
Um, per Don's comments anyway, is a complaint a report number that is given to the individual?
The answer is yes. Okay, let me, let's move on, um, do we have a representative from the, uh, Tyler, um, Councilmember Tam's office? Lisa?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and do we have a representative from, uh, Donald Kim's office? I, I think we do, right?
Yes, Chair, it's Kathy, I spoke to you today on the phone.
Yeah, I, I just talked to you, Kathy.
Yes, I'm here.
We have three of you here, which one of you is gonna take the lead?
I'll, I'll say that Tyler's willing to take the lead.
And who's this?
This is Lisa from Tyler's office.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, I just wanna know who's gonna come up to the plate. So she'll be the one to lead, she'll be, and she'll coordinate with the state and also Donald Kim's office. Um, I'll give, um, said before Jenna, the copy of this photograph. So when you folks get together, I hope, you can give us a solution to our problem on the top of Leva Heights. Is that okay?
I'll reach out with everybody.
You got it?
Yes, yes, and then I followed, um, oh, sorry, Chair. I think I mentioned to you that, uh, Senator Kim is off island, but I did briefly, um, mention to her the concerns that we spoke about on the phone, so I'll follow up with her when she returns.
And I wanna thank you for your immediate response when I sent it to her off, your office, uh,
That's.
Yeah, tell, tell Senator.
That is the norm here.
Tell Senator Kim, Leva Heights was supposed to be a very peaceful part of his jurisdiction, but it just got a little active, that's all.
And that's a concern for all.
That's right, okay, any questions, Bert?
I wanna extend, it's too much longer. Um, just two comments, when the complaints started coming in to me, my biggest concern was that people were living or camping out in forested areas. Uh, to the, to the wine aisle side of the residence, residential neighborhood is the Cominha School Forest and the winds are northeasterly. If a campground, an unkept campground gets fire, that wind is gonna take it over the residential neighborhood. Um, similarly, if the person is camping on this hillside along, uh, Oahu Country Club or any of those, you know, mountains, the property going all the way up to the top, winds coming down in Iwano are going to, in sight. And this is not speculation, three years ago, neighbors at the top complained about smoke. And we couldn't figure it out, it wasn't until a hiker came across an untended renewed fire. And the fire department had to go in, dig it up, because there's so much dense foliage growth on that ground. They think they're putting out the fire, but it's actually growing, going down. And that's, and it can come back up, as we know. And that was my main concern. But then the, you know, the well-being and whatever, everyone's, you know, concerned is that. But the third thing I wanna point out is, and I don't know this to be true, it's just reported to me, is when they pick up people who are homeless at the top, they will take them away and maybe drop them off at Safeway, down into the public tree. And then they come back within a week. And so my thought is, I know that the city has opened up a kind of a homeless center.
It's called CORE.
And it might be a better idea, I know, it may not be open 24 hours. But if it is, to have them dropped off there and they're then logged in, where they were picked up, offered services, all those things, but then they're in the system. And if they keep showing up back there and the record will grow longer, get one central location, information is not lost. But you're building up a record of this person so that more stringent needs, tasks to be taken, they can. But at least he's in the system and being offered services, you know, and trying to be placed, I don't know, but that's a thought.
Okay, thank you. And also, I wanna thank Bert for bringing this to my attention, I was in Japan when I got this notice and got all these emails. So when I came back, I said, we have to do something about it. Thanks, Bert, and thank you for all the residents who've showed up and testified. And I wanna thank all of our, uh, representatives from the state and the city, they're gonna take care of this and I hope come with a resolution. Ma'am, you have something to say, you wanna? Sure, yeah, can you go back to the?
I wanted to make a little clarification and some of this. Okay, the case where the police came up and.
Can, can you go closer to the mic?
The, the case where the police came up and, um, the suspect left prior, that's why there wasn't an arrest on that one. Okay, uh, Bakuaio Park incident, where a lot of Costco foods were taken, they did make a report. Uh, just a couple of days ago, um, I ran into a lady named Lani, she lives on, uh, Kaliki Mata, I talked to her this morning. She made a report on her blue bin because they used the blue bin on the Nakuaio case and loaded it up with food. Another neighbor saw one o'clock or two o'clock in the morning, a suspicious male dragging that blue bin down the hill. So they, they are trying to make reports.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, for the, the, that's pretty good video that you guys have. Um, if you guys can track down who that belongs to and what case it belongs to, if you guys can make sure that the police, we have it. Um, usually when we get video that good, it's, it's only a matter of time before we locate the individual.
What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna have Camilia send that video to, um, uh, Councilmember Tam's office. Because Councilmember Tam is gonna be the lead in this. And then we'll give everything to his office. Everything, rather than spread it all over, is that okay, Lieutenant?
It's actually, it adds additional step that's not necessary, but I appreciate that they wanna be, that everybody wants to.
Let's just have one point of contact, if not, it's gonna be spread all over the place. And, um, Councilmember Tam's office is, Gracie said, you know, they'll take the lead, okay? Okay, yeah.
Hey, Creighton?
What's up, Wale?
Can we ask for additional coverage up in that areas where they've been having these robberies at those times? Because what hap- what happens is, what happens is, um, these guys, they, they hide, right, when they see the blue and whites coming?
Mm-hmm.
And so we need to have some additional so that the, so that the residents feel a little bit safer. Go ahead.
Not a problem, um, what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna suggest to them, because part of the, when they did the sweep in the Iwale area, um, they weren't sure where everyone was going. So I'm gonna let them know that up, upper level is, um, appear to have been a landing spot. And, um, so I'll get the, um, our, uh, community policing team, which deals with the, the homelessness issues a lot, um, alerted to that as well. And then we'll, we'll get moving on this.
Okay, thank you very much, Lieutenant, for sticking around.
No problem.
I guess the bottom line is that all the, uh, homeless who got chased out of Chanatown, they found a better place up in Leva Heights.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Beat them well, I mean, jeez, you guys have good stuff in that refrigerator, I'm just joking.
Yes.
But hopefully that we'll get, we'll get this, uh, solved. Any, anybody else in regards to, yes, who, Henry?
I have experience with individuals that don't carry IDs. Okay, so they give all kind of different names and the officer just accepts it? What is the standard practice when somebody doesn't have an ID?
Sir, in, in these kinds of situations, um, a lot of times, even though they're using a fake name, they tend to use the same ones. So every time they're taken in, it's put in as an alias. And, um, so these guys, they're not, they're not necessarily smart, so they, they tend to use the same names in, in, in situations. So we have a pretty good idea of, of the people, even when they're using their fake names.
Yeah, but individuals aren't being taken down and ID'd at any point in time, right?
No, if they're, if they're under arrest, they're taken. If we, if we go up and, you know, you guys call about a suspicious person, we go up, we catch him in the act of doing something, even when we run their alias, it'll show if they have, um, it's connected to our system that shows if they have warrants or not. So people, people still get arrested even when they're using a fake name.
Yeah, but these incidents that are trespassing,
Mm-hmm.
and squatting and things like that, they're not arrestable incidents. But maybe a suggestion might be is, if they don't carry an ID, take them in the squad car, take them down back to Kaliki Station and then run them against your mug, mug books anyway.
Yeah, we have limits, we have limits based on when we can take, actually physically take a person into custody. But a lot of times what officers do, if they, if they're unable to take them actually into custody and detain them, they take, uh, front, back, side photos, photos of their tattoos and then we get them identified.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Chance.
Hi, Lieutenant, um.
Hi.
I wanted to ask, how does a usual HPD sweep like that work? Like, um, what is the process?
So, um, as most of you guys know, the ACLU sued the, the county of Hawaii for the way that they were dealing with the homeless. So just as an example, um, when they were doing the Iwale sweep, what they have to do is, they approach the person, um, they have to offer them services, they have to call every shelter to find out if there's a bed available. They have to take note of who they spoke with at the shelter and what the results of the check was. We have to document on our body cams the offer of shelter to the person and if they refuse or not. And then we have a, a, a very complicated process to deal with all their property when we take them in. So, but the good thing about it, it's complicated, but we have it set already, it's where it meets all the, um, it ta- it takes all the legal blocks that we have to, that we have to cover. And, um, it's possible. So I think all it needs to be is the, the, they need to be aware that there is a homeless problem up in Aleva and we can get something rolling.
Okay, thank you very much, then, anybody from the board name a question? Okay, I wanna thank everybody for, uh, coming in regards to this issue. But, uh, let's move on, are there, are there any other concerns aside from the top of Leva Heights? I think a lady over there? Just come up, identify yourself and what is your concern?
Hi, um, my name is Sheri Hauser, I'm a current employee of the Hilton Hawaiian Village. Um, I've worked there for 18 years, um, you might have seen in the news, um, you know, the Hilton Hawaiian Village is on strike, we are on day 21 now. Um, it's not easy, it's hard work, um, we're out there marching in the hot sun, chanting, singing all day. Um, you know, we're in financial disparity, um, just wanting to put an end to this and come to the tables for negotiation. Uh, we remain positive, um, and we come together in solidarity. You know, we wanna build something nice for our community, something that will last through the generation because, you know, 1,800 workers, a lot of them live within these communities as well. Um, you know, the Hilton's not owned by Hilton anymore, it's owned by a company called Park Hotel and Resorts. Uh, after COVID, they took advantage of us, they cut our staff considerably, um, it's affected our workload in all departments. Every day, thousands of us hospitality workers, um, show up to service our guests and we're absolutely struggling to get ahead to provide that individual level of Hawaiian hospitality that our guests paid for. Um, services that, that they deserve. Uh, we're constantly making excuses for cuts, service, why there's no perks, amenities and most all, you know, the lack of service. Um, we're fighting for a livable wage, um, we wanna return back to that pre-COVID staffing. We're overworked, under, you know, undervalued, understaffed. Um, we asked, you know, as 1,800 of us, uh, local residents are out on strike, that our community, our, our neighbors, um, do not cross our picket lines, you know, no hosting of events. You know, no hosting of events, you know, conventions, staycation, just to please honor um, this strike and the struggles that we're going through right now. That's all.
Thank you. Any questions for the board? Any questions for the residents? I want to thank you for coming to, to speak to us.
Thank you very much.
Matter of fact, I just left the Hilton, you know, Nagoya. So it's one of my favorite hotels. I hope, I hope that you both do resolve this.
It's not just the Hilton, you know, we're part of the Local Five Union, so there's the Hyatt, um, Sheraton, Marriott.
Right.
Um, and, and we're all just, I mean, we started this negotiation way before our contract even expired in hopes that, you know, we could come to the table and, and do something positive. But unfortunately, it's gonna take some more time. So we're, there, that is where we are, twenty-four days.
Well, we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
And the reason I say that because I teach at the Travel Industry Management School at the university.
Yes.
And tourism is our main economy.
Yes, absolutely.
And we cannot be chasing away our.
Right, because where one falls at the Hilton Hawaiian Village, it could very well be a domino effect of the Hyatt, the Marriott, and Choya once again.
Anyway, thank you for coming, good luck.
Thank you.
Any comments? Questions? Thank you. Any other resident concerns?
Chair. Carol.
Carol, go ahead.
Yeah, I was talking with the neighbor and they live on Hanai Loop. At the back of their property is a large wall to the next level up.
So what street?
Hanai Loop. We've been talking about, yeah, 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 okay. Um, and there's an easement between their property, the wall that meets the properties above them. The up, upper neighbor had a mango tree cut down. The people who came and cut it left all of the branches there. And now the um, person on the bottom is concerned that as they're drying, that they'll roll down the hill into his house because it was a large tree and they left all the pieces. So uh, Representative Tam's office? I think you're, they've contacted you?
I'll have to check on that. Um, if anybody works, it would be with Lynn, our constituent services director. So I can double check on that.
Okay, so I turned in the form, but I just wanted to just put it into the record.
Thank you very much. Uh, put it on the agenda next week. Any, anybody else, uh, any more resident concerns? Okay, if not, uh, again, thank you for the residents coming. And if you want, you can, unless you want to stick around, you can leave. Um, we have an exciting meeting, you know? So if you folks want to leave, I'll give you uh, thirty seconds to get up and go. Creighton? Okay, let's uh, move on now. Let's see, uh, reports of members' attendance at other meetings. I'm gonna ask, where's Chance? Did he leave? I was gonna ask, uh, those of you who went to uh, visit the uh, O-triple-C, any comments?
Yes, it hasn't happened yet, November first.
Oh, okay. Uh, and ask them if you can get free room in board. Sorry, just joking. All right, moving on. All right, all right. Oh, Oahu Metropolitan Planning, uh, Ompa. Yes.
On, on that um, other meeting, uh, Carol and I went to um, meeting on that fire ants.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
At um, Stevenson Intermediate. And um, the reason I went was because of the area. Now they're saying is that um, height at um, Apakoleo. And the reason is um, it may spread to our area. And the one I was really concerned is that if it spread in our area and say a ci- uh, a ci- senior citizen was in, regarded and they got bitten by those ants, um, but to me, that was my concern. We need to operate and hopefully we can get this little fire ants out of our state. So anyway, we went to that meeting.
Any questions? Thank you. Thanks, Don. Any other? Do we add? Yes.
So I went to the IELA Board Meeting last week, I believe it was. And um, it, it was a small group, but I got to meet John Schnell from O-triple-C, and I let him know that we were, there was a bunch of us that was gonna come and visit. Um, I did ask questions about the new O-triple-C. Um, it was an interesting meeting. It was an interesting meeting because you can hear that a lot of, uh, the residents that were there, they have genuine concerns. And um, you know, it's basically the same where, oh, we'll get back to you. But what I did like about their meeting was they allowed the people to basically communicate with the representatives individually. So I, I just wanted to say that I went with a girlfriend who's running for office and we wanted to see because we were concerned primarily about the Red Hill Water, and they were speaking about that. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, moving right along, uh, Ompa. Cora?
The Citizens Advisory Committee of the Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is transportation, uh, met October second for the monthly meeting. I was able to attend thanks to the internet, um, from California where I was. Um, there was a, there was a report from the executive director. Several of them, the executive director went uh, to see different um, uh, transportation mitigation in different countries. They went to Scandinavia, maybe also New York City. Um, and um, they uh, um, came back reporting that, um, it's amazing what, what those countries have done. Uh, for example, twenty-five percent of trips are by bikes in Copenhagen City. Um, and uh, Oslo is possibly the safest, or Norway's possibly the safest country in Europe for pedestrian fatalities. They went to try to get, gain ideas about what we should be doing here on Oahu to reduce pedestrian fatalities and injuries for Project Vision Zero project. Um, and um, interestingly enough, we are tied with Romania for the number of fatalities per million, which is eighty per million. Romania is the worst country in Europe in terms of fatalities for pedestrians. So we have a lot of work. Uh, and uh, the lessons learned, uh, according to the executive director are that uh, all users must be included in planning for reducing fatalities. Um, speed must be reduced for cars and reduce dependence on driving. It takes political will and it takes a lot of time. It takes generations, but have to start somewhere.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I chuckled a little bit, you know? We talk about our traffic problems here. Try and visit Vietnam or China or some, and I mean, dinner, you know, you don't need a crosswalk. Just try, you know, go between the cars to get across the street. So anyway, thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, moving right along. Um, the next is uh, the mayor's representative. He cannot be with us this evening, so uh, he has a very, very long report. So just sit back, relax. And for the record, I think all of us have a copy of his written report. But for the record, we have to read it. So I'm gonna ask our secretary, Chance, to read his report verbatim so that it can be on the record that you have a copy. Because we, we need a, oh, then, then I'll tell you, you don't have a copy, pay attention. All right. I just got it this, this morning as a matter of fact. Oh, wait a minute. Here, here it comes. Here it comes.
Okay, for the city or the mayor's representative report, um, it reads, Aloha Chair Fong, please find the memo for the record below regarding the concerns addressed at the board's last meeting. For highlights and announcements, this month's highlights for the mayor's newsletter, an update on operations and ongoing construction for Oahu's rail sys- transit system. Um, can be found in the newsletter. The city officially unveils A'ala Respite, our newest facility aimed at addressing homelessness. Honolulu's medical examiner shows off an upgraded facility plus makes a long-awaited hiring announcement. For the second time in thirteen months, the city opens a new lifeguard tower, helping protect more of Oahu shorelines. And an update on renovations at the Waikiki Shell, including when the facility will reopen to the public, um, is also in the newsletter. The October twenty-twenty-four edition of the mayor's newsletter can be found online at HTTPS backslash backslash WWE dot Honolulu dot gov backslash mayor slash newsletter slash. Um, sewer service charges. The city's Department of Environmental Services plans to increase its sewer service charges for all residential and commercial customers in fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, which begins July first, twenty-twenty-five. ENV wishes to present information at all upcoming board meetings on the reasons for the increase, the amount of the increase, and what the additional revenue will be used for. We are asking all board chairs to contact Roger Babcock or Mike O'Keefe at Roger dot Babcock at Honolulu dot gov or M O Keefe at Honolulu dot gov. Or eight oh eight, or at eight oh eight seven six eight three four eight six. Again, eight oh eight seven eight six, or seven six eight three four eight six to set up your board's presentation and to ask questions. Department issues follow-up. I'm requesting issue number one, requesting quarterly updates for the following monster homes. Uh, monster home status for sixteen oh four Hanai Loop and monster home status for two zero four three Leviash. Residents requested updates regarding the two aforementioned addresses. Um, per the neighborhood commission office, this request was referred to the Department of Planning and Permitting, who requested an extension to perform more research. We will retain this item on the next report, so these questions can be answered at a future meeting. Mahalo for your patience and understanding. Um, follow-up number two, squatters and illegal activity at abandoned properties. Sixteen twenty-one Pohaku Street, Honolulu, Hawaii, nine six eight one nine. A resident raised concerns of legal activities from the aforementioned abandoned home. Per the Honolulu Police Department, um, the Honolulu Police Department, along with the city's store property ordinance team, has conducted enforcement at these residents in the past. During the enforcement operations, the HPD and SPO team were able to clean up trash debris that were left around the residence and surrounding streets. Unfortunately, both the HPD and the SPO teams are not able to go onto the property due to property being privately owned. Several neighbors that the HPD spoke to were encouraged to call nine-one-one when suspicious individuals and activity are observed at the residence. The HPD als- has also contacted the Department of Planning and Permitting about the residents and the squatters that inhabit the garage area. The DPP is aware of the residents and is currently working on a solution to properly address the activity at the residence. Um, also, per the neighborhood commission office, this request was referred to the Department of Planning and Permitting, who requested an extension to perform more research. Again, this item will be retained on the next report, so these questions can be answered at a future meeting. And they thank us for our patience and understanding. Um, issue follow-up number three, the Y-Ni Police Station. Board member Nita would like to know the date this police station opened and their staffing levels. Per the Honolulu Police Department, the Y-Ni Police Station officially opened in May of twenty-sixteen and is a substation. Department's District Eight, the Eva Kapalae district. The district has a total of twenty-three beats with a minimum of nineteen beats staff. There are no positions exclusively assigned to the Y-Ni Station. All personnel working there are a part of the overall staff of the district. Follow-up number four, Liliokalani Botanical Gardens homeless issue. The board would like to request a coordinated enforcement to address the homeless encampment that beneath the bridge. Per HPD, the Honolulu Police Department is currently working with the city's store property ordinance team, Department of Parks and Recreations, and the State of Hawaii to schedule a joint enforcement date for the Liliokalani Botanical Gardens. The operation would be to provide outreach services to the individuals in the area and transition bills will lead into certain two shelters. Um, per the Department of Parks and Recreation, DPR staff contacted Kenneth Shimizu with DFM. He said the DFM cleanup schedule is booked for the next few months. Mr. Shimizu noted the request for this location and will coordinate with DPR staff and Mr. Jun Yong, the contact for the state H1 underpass jurisdiction, to schedule a coordinated cleanup as soon as the schedule arrives. In the meantime, DPR routinely facilitates state entry to the H1 underpass via Foster Garden to ongoingly reduce the accumulation of debris and encampments. Per the Department of Facility Maintenance, the Department of Facility Maintenance Store Property Ordinance Branch is working with the Department of Parks and Recreations, Foster Botanical Garden, the Honolulu Police Department and the state Department of Transportation, homeless coordinator, that's a mouthful, um, in joint agencies enforcement cleanup of the area. Um, issue follow-up number five, Chinatown's new security cameras. Member Payne would like to know who will be monitoring the cameras, monitoring the cameras in Chinatown and if they will be actively monitored or used only for review after an incident has occurred. Per the Honolulu Police Department, the HPD is currently seeking and processing volunteers to monitor cameras on Chinatown. Until community volunteers are enlisted, the cameras are being used to aid in enforcement operations in the downtown Chinatown areas in accordance with revised ordinances of Honolulu Section two dash three, two point three, eight two. Authorization for certain over video monitoring of public activity from fixed locations. Um, per the Department of Information Technology, DIT agrees with HPD's response. DIT will not be responsible for monitoring these cameras. Issue follow-up number six, requesting installation of a no parking sign at a level drive and Mamalu Street intersection. Chair Fong would like to request for DTS to conduct a study to reposition a no parking sign next to the slow sign on Mamalu Street. Per the Department of Transportation Services, the Department of Transportation Services completed their investigation into Chair Fong's request to install a no parking anytime sign near the slow sign. Due to the current location of the no parking corner to here sign on the Laualu Street, DTS recommends the installation of the no parking at any time begin sign at the location of the slow sign. Additionally, the no parking corner to here sign will be replaced with a no parking at any time sign and sign to clearly define the no parking. The installation and replacement of the no parking anytime signs will be completed under Payne and Sign Work Order three five one four seven issued to the Department of Facility Maintenance. Again, that's Payne and Sign Work Order three five one four seven. Um, for updates regarding the PSWO, please contact the Department of Facility Maintenance at eight oh eight seven six eight eight three two one or eight oh eight seven six eight eight three two two. Issues follow-up number seven, I'm requesting Department of Transportation Services representative at neighborhood board fourteen next regular board meeting on Monday, October fourteen, twenty twenty-four today. Um, due to the multiple new and ongoing DTS-related concerns reported to DTS this month, the board would like to request a DTS representative to address multiple questions provided to the neighborhood commission office. Per the Department of Transportation Services, here are DTS's responses to the questions raised. DTS will conduct this study, a traffic study on Alaneel Street for congestion during school drop-off and pickup periods. DTS will inform the board of the status of their findings upon completion of their investigation. DTS received a copy of the attached letter from former state representative Mizuno on July nineteen, twenty twenty-four. DTS is currently conducting an investigation and will inform former state representative Mizuno and the board of their findings once the investigation is completed. The following bus stop numbers are school day operation only, bus stops and serve only in the morning by two route, ten trips when the area schools are in session. There is no school day afternoon service or any other bus routes that serve these, the following bus stops. Bus stop number three eighty at New Wana Avenue and Wiley Street. Number three eighty-one, New Wana Avenue and Ford and Ford Place. Three eighty-two, New Wana Avenue and Robinson Lane. And three nine one one Wiley Street and My Mind. one one Wiley Street and my mind. Permanent signage will be installed on the bus stop sign poles at the stops and form riders of the school day operation schedule. The scheduled route information is available at WWW dot thebus.org or by calling the Bus Transit Information Office, available daily from five thirty AM to ten PM at eight oh eight eight four eight five 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 nine, and then press the number two. DTS check number four, DTS check the traffic signal at the intersection of Hala Drive and Muckahine Street and found it's working properly. The sensor loops are all functioning, including the left turn sensors. DTS did observe some vehicles stopping past the stop line. The rear of the vehicle is past the stop line, therefore are not on the sensor. The last issue follow up issue following the break regarding the intersection of Hala Drive and Kapalane Avenue. The board would like the DTS to look into an investigation of this intersection to find a solution to allow traffic a little better on both sides of Hala Drive. Per the Department of Transportation Services, they have received a copy of the attached letter from the former state representative Mizuno on July nineteenth twenty twenty four. DTS will conduct an investigation which may require research, site inspections, a traffic study, and an analysis of the area's traffic collision history. DTS will inform the board of their findings once the investigation is complete.
Thank you very much. That was very well read, and I want to thank Ed, wherever you are, for a very comprehensive report. I'm not going to ask for questions. I'm going to say unless it's really pressing, hold your questions to December, unless you want to pass them to me, now pass it to Ed. Okay, but he's not here to respond to it. Okay, any comments? Yes, Donald.
On his report, seven two about the study. What I'm concerned, that and eight is almost the same thing. The one that home bar representative Mizuno was to ask them if a Ronobau would be made or to be investigated. According to Tyler, they came out and said Ronobau could not be made because the street was too narrow. What I'm concerned, we still EST is still thinking about this investigation. I want them to tell us what they intend to do. I don't want all these words. I want action to them, because this is I you know that I asked for a four way stop sign. They said no. Okay, now Mizuno is asking for a Ronobau. They said no. Now the question is, bump, speed bump was came came up, and they said no. I mean.
Don, I'm going to interrupt real quick. Look at number eight. They haven't killed. They're going to do a research. I'm going to leave it on the agenda. Okay, okay, right, all right, thanks. All right, any other, any questions, any other comments? Okay, I'm going to move on.
Hi, can I just share a quick announcement?
Sure.
Right now, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So that's okay, the neighborhood commission office just wanted to share a quick announcement. The neighborhood commission's neighborhood plan committee began meeting to conduct the comprehensive review of the neighborhood plan. A presentation with more information is available on the board's Google Drive. The committee currently meets on the third Monday of every month at six PM. If you have any questions, you can contact the neighborhood commission office.
Thank you, Camelia. One more thing, too. I think the your board, you can notice that the format is different than the one we had, right? Well, I've been told that my format is way outdated, so I don't want to including your chair, right? I know, and so I want to thank Camelia. She sanitized this format. We will be, we'll be using this format, and I told her to send it to me, and then we'll just use it as a format from now on. Okay. All right, moving. Chair Fong, any comments?
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, wait, one person, who? Sorry, chance first.
Follow up with Donald's or board member Nita's last.
Yeah, go ahead.
Statement regarding the.
Go ahead.
I made the same statement with the Alaniel Street issue and that. Yes, there's been near misses, yes, but at the same time, you got to think, would it take somebody to get somebody to die at that intersection for something to be done? That's just something. It's just a question on the polls, and then for DTS, something I wanted to also bring up for this. I'm not sure if this is the place to bring it up to, but there is quite a bit of late closures along the freeway and even on Nimitz Highway. And then, again, for me, it's all about communication, similar to the no right turn off or no right turns. Or no right turn on, no right turn on red signs. There wasn't any communication with DTS on that. There is also, I was already in the commutation with the public regarding the closures on the freeway and Nimitz, or whatever agency was responsible, because it was kind of something.
So those are good issues. Why don't you hold on to it till December when we get Ed here, then he can take it under his wing. Okay, thank you. Donald, you have something else?
Seven C.
Team?
Yes, that have Mr. Senator Roe on the hook for the military, not a capital file. I have a message from our representative Ed Case. And in that message, he's saying that the congressional team is looking into this. So I would like to have this thing eliminated and leave it to the congressional team to work out something with the army or the federal government to have this thing done.
You want to bring this up when Senator Roe, so give his report?
Yeah, well, what is that?
Which we're not there yet. Yeah, hold on to that, then I'm going to put it under that. All right, any questions for the city rep? If not, council member Tyler Santos.
This is Lisa from Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office. Just wanted to let you know that we sent out council members monthly newsletter for information on action items in all of his district. But I'll give you a couple of highlights. One is adaptive reuse legislation to facilitate downtown revitalization. Bill fifty one intends to address the requirements set forth by Act thirty seven, which mandates that counties in Hawaii amend their ordinance ordinances by January twenty twenty five to allow for adaptive reuse of commercial buildings for residential purposes. So right now, we're working with a, with a working group on adaptive reuse, and I'll be able to bring more updates in future meetings. There's also a joint with council member Kia Aina, they introduced a resolution twenty four one four eight to help boost apartment construction by reevaluating what types of apartment projects can be built in existing apartment zones around Oahu. It is estimated that the changes contained in reso twenty four one forty eight could result in the production of hundreds of new apartment units at a range of income levels all within existing apartment zones. Also in our newsletter and also listed on it on this agenda regarding illegal game rooms. The council formed a task force under reso twenty four one four three to address the ongoing issue of illegal gambling rooms. The task force includes representatives from HPD, Department of Planning and Permitting, prosecuting attorney's office, and some public appointees. They provided a report to council earlier this month, which suggests a number of other ways that the game rooms can be reined in. Because of the additional strategies that were recommended, the task force suggested that we start with a new bill in twenty twenty five that can incorporate those recommendations rather than utilizing the existing bills fifty seven and fifty eight. So I would suggest to keep this on the agenda so that I can update accordingly.
Should we keep it on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Also on the agenda is Judge Street sidewalk. So I just want to thank you again for those who were able to sign a petition. Council member has submitted the petition to DTS, so they are aware of the request. We may not have an update on this one for maybe within the next three months, so I'm just saying maybe to take this one off the agenda, but I definitely will give an update accordingly.
You want me to take that off?
Yes.
Sidewalk on Judge Street or should I just leave it on until we get a result?
I, I'm just saying that I may not have a full update.
Well, let me, let me ask, let me ask the person who has that issue at heart. Don, you want to leave it on until you get a report?
Well, I think we should leave it on because then we can, you know, trace it where it is.
Okay, you answered my question. I'll leave it on. I'll leave it on. I'll leave it on, and then we'll just, until you get it resolved. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. There was a request from last meeting. I'm, I'm sorry, I don't remember who requested it, but it was regarding a lava basketball court, the retaining wall at a lava park basketball court. So right now, the next steps are for an archaeological inventory survey to be done since the wall was built a very long time ago. An additional funding for the survey for the historical wall and authorization to submit to the state historic preservation for the project is ongoing. It was approved by the city's budget and financing services director on September eleventh twenty twenty four. So I'm hoping that I can have another update to you within the next two months.
That was a basketball court where?
It's a retaining wall at a lava park. There's the basketball court.
That's yours. Is that the Aleva neighborhood park?
Aleva, Aleva neighborhood.
Okay.
On the.
Okay, so you want to leave it on or? All right.
Yeah, I think so, because I might be able to bring something soon, and that is my report for now.
Questions from the board? Questions, yes, question for the.
I just wanted to know exactly where they're talking. They're talking about building a basketball.
No, 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 there's, there's a basketball court at that park, the Aleva Neighborhood Park on Lulena Street.
And. Lulena, L O L E E N A, right? I'm going to look.
Laura. Anyway, and it has, it's very nice. There's a problem with the retaining wall that I need to fix it, but which is why they can't put the backboards on.
Okay.
So a lot of the neighbors are wondering why it's still so long.
I just didn't even know that was there. Thank you for talking.
Yeah, check out the park, nice little park.
Okay, any questions, comments? All right, moving right along. Okay, Senator Rhodes. Someone here from.
All right, good. Sorry, apologize. Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Braden Chung, and tonight I'll be representing Senator Rhodes's office. Senator Rhodes would just like to give you a COVID nineteen update as always. An updated COVID nineteen vaccine has been approved for use. This vaccine is not meant to prevent every symptom of COVID nineteen. Rather, the aim is to protect against severe illnesses, hospitalization, and death. Some bills that we're looking to introduce include furthering increased spending programs to public publicly fund candidates for elections, so basically, we're looking to hopefully further introduce bills that will increase public funding for politicians as well as provide staff support to the campaign campaign spending commission, as well as including investigators. And expansions on the ban on contractors making political donations to family and other offices of the contractor's company. We're also looking to introduce a carbon tax. And lastly, Senator Rhodes is also attempting to set up a temporary commission to look into issues of the Department of Human Resources, Department of Child Welfare. So basically, we're looking, we're just trying to mitigate like abuses within the child welfare department within Department of Human Resources, as well as increase funding if needed. If you have any bill ideas for our next session, you can let me know, and I'll relay this to Senator Rhodes. Thank you.
You mentioned anything about the military helicopters over residential area, item number one?
Yes, I thought that was, we gave it to Senator Roe, and yes, and last.
That of answer. Do you know anything about that? Hello?
Oh, sorry, you're talking to me, correct?
Yeah. Look under.
Okay, I just want to, I thought you were talking to Mr. Nita. So I wanted to kind of leave that off because I did remember in Mr. Nita having, wanting to say something about it, but basically, I haven't been notified at all about any of this. If anything, I was going to just say if if it's still an issue, if it's not being resolved at all, if it has, if they haven't gotten back to you, Mr. Nita, I will. I was going to personally reach out to them and see.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what we're going to do. Mr. Nita's here. Mr. Nita's going to reiterate what his concern about military helicopters in residential areas. Don.
Yes, I have a message from our representative in Washington, Mr. Case. He sent me a message, and in that message, she's saying that our so-called and senators are looking into it, and they will so-called take care of. So as far as I'm concerned, I would like to scratch this out on the Senator Roe's responsibility. And we believe that our state representative and senator, and we'll wait for their next comment. Thank you.
Okay, you heard that? You're off the hook.
Yep, I'll make sure to notify Senator Rhodes.
All right, fine. Any other questions, comments from the? Henry?
Yes, I, maybe I didn't make myself known last session anyway, last meeting here. I'm kind of tired of hearing the COVID results and things like that. And I also am kind of tired. Besides me, I, I watched the Chinatown Neighborhood Board also go on you. Okay, go off on you in regards to having the COVID information. Is there anything I can do, Wes, to eliminate this from, from his report?
Um, I'm going to be honest with.
The answer is no, that's his prerogative as our representative. Let me ask you a question. Have you had all your shots? The answer is no, Henry. Henry, you're going to be hearing COVID from Senator Rose from now until I don't know when. Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, thank you very much, Brendan. Moving right along, Senator Kim.
Hi, Kathy Nee from Senator Kim's office. Our community report was sent out, and I just want to highlight that we wanted to note that a hundred thousand dollars in capital improvement funding was released to the Kokua Kalihi Valley Comprehensive Family Services. And everything from the meeting was heard by me. I will be passing along all that information to Senator Kim, and we will be working with Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office. I'm open to any questions.
Questions? No, but thank you. Thank you, Senator Kim. Moving right, yeah, moving right along, Representative Takamuchi.
Everybody. Okay, first shout out, I'm sorry, please not care, but shout out to Edward for helping me get the ball rolling on getting the city to kind of do the collaborative effort with the Liliokalani Botanical Garden Homeless Encampment. Been very helpful. Just a couple, two quick announcements. Board member Nita mentioned we council member Dos Santos Tam, me and Representative Della Alvalade hosted a meeting for little fire ants because they are in the Papukalea area. But also, October is Stop the Ant Month in general, so the little, little fire ants, as you might know, are kind of spreading on Oahu. There's a big infestation out on the windward side on that we really want to keep them from, you know, getting anywhere else. So we're there, the state's doing awareness this month. These pests are, they spread to locations by riding on plants, greenways, and other materials. Um, so with their, the state's doing awareness this month, um, these pests are, they spread to locations by riding on plants, greenways and other materials. And as they showed us in the meeting, uh, for those of you who are there, if you remember, they're very, very tiny, like they brought like a, they brought like a microscope for us to see them, um, so it's very hard to tell. If they're on your property until maybe you start getting stung and by that point, you know, we really want to make sure everything, um. So the Hawaii Ant Lab, uh, gives away free test kits and especially during this month when they're trying to raise awareness. They really are encouraging and asking residents to help them test their properties, um. Because it's equally as important for them to know, you know, where the ants aren't, so that they can focus all their efforts to where they are. So the, it's a simple test, it's actually just a couple like coffee stirrers, you get peanut butter, you put them around your property, you get some ants for a couple of days, freeze them, you just mail it to them. Um, so that they can help identify what kind of pests are actually on your property or not. Um, and so you can actually go online to get a free kit and then I think we also pay for postage for you to send it back, so it's entirely free process, it just takes. A couple of days of your time. And, oh, and your peanut butter, yes, you have to fry your own peanut butter. But, um, the free test kits are available at stoptheant.org. So if you guys, if anyone would like to help them out, I'm sure they would really appreciate that. Um, and today, or in the last couple of days, we also got notification that the Public Utilities Commission. Is going to be collecting public input because Hawaii Gas is, um. Proposing a rate increase that needs to be approved by the PUC, so they're hosting a number of meetings across the state. So for Oahu, it's going to be a hybrid meeting, um, either in person at the PUC office. Which is at four sixty-five South King Street in Rome one zero three or on Webex. And the meeting on Oahu will be on October twenty-fifth at five thirty PM. Um, if you can't attend the meeting, they are still also accepting written comments, you can, um. Email the comments to PUC at hawaii.gov. Um, you can mail it to them, to their office, or you can also use, there's an online form available, um, you'd have to go to their website though to check it out, um. So that online form plus additional information, like the full requests of what they're doing and what they're proposing, is all available on the, um. PUC's website, which is W W W dot P U C. Dot Hawaii, spelled out H A W A I I dot gov. And then just look for the announce, the public notice for the Hawaii Gas Rate Case, um, when I looked today, it was like right on the front page, I think it's. Upcoming meetings, so if you'd like to see what they're proposing and, um. Provide any comments, they're collecting those. And that's all I have, if there's any questions or anything.
Questions from the board? Questions from the audience, questions from Webex. No, thank you very much, Representative.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, I have one question, this, uh, photograph, remember that? You want to take it? Okay. Thank you. All right, moving right along, uh, Representative Holt's office. Representative Mizuno's office. Uh, Governor's Representative. How about, uh, Representative from, um, Congressional District Representative Ed Case's office? Okay. All right, um, moving on to item number eight, um, minutes from the September ninth, twenty twenty-four, are there any corrections? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes, move by. Carol, seconded by, seconded chance. In discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Any oppose? Okay, no opposition, motions carried, minutes approved. Uh, community organizations, Mala Hill. Same chair, this.
Chair, sorry, point of order.
Oh, I forgot, we, we have a, one more person to speak. And he wasn't on, I'm gonna ask Vern to come up and talk to. It's under new business, I believe, right? Did I miss, did I miss new business? I'm sorry, Vern. Under new business, oh. Um, La Leha Palama Christmas Parade. We have Vern, not, uh, Aura.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
You want people to leave you alone, just carry one trash bag. They walk across the street of, like. But seriously, um, the parade, there's no meeting in November, so. Please remember the parade is on November twenty-ninth, and I'm sure Darren will be your contact, Darren is, has promised to attend the, uh. Safety meeting on November twenty-first. I'm here because, uh, uh, Chair asked me about donations. So I have a five self, I just, not self, it's a just envelopes to me. And there's a letter saying instructions to make the contribution to La Leha Palama. Um, payable to Commandeering Alliance Foundation. And each, each envelope has a instruction. Uh, please note in the memo section to put a Christmas parade. Also provide, provide your name and complete address, the Commandeering Alliance Foundation is a five-one-C-three nonprofit organization. We will mail you a letter acknowledging for your contribution. Depending on how you file your taxes, your contribution may be taxed, you know. If you don't, if you, if you take the standard deduction. Can, can, I'll, I'll give you five, Chair.
Only five? We have, yeah, one. No, let's see, we can, we can afford a staff, I think.
Coming out of my pocket, but.
Yeah, um, well, let me, raise your hand, how many of you want, would like to make a donation? Well, I'll tell you, af- after the meeting, we'll come up, I don't want to embarrass them in front of everybody.
The last thing I have is, um.
Something for it's?
It's, um. I wore orange because this is only orange shirt to have the Giants. And, uh, aside being parade man, I'm balloon man. So happy Halloween, you folks. Because the Chair almost forgot me, I don't know, should the Chair have one?
Thank you. All right.
All right.
Oh, you.
These, these last long time, sometimes, some people, they laugh like here.
Thank you, thank you. While, while you're up there, let's go over the, um, the La Leha, uh, Palama Christmas Parade. It's on November the twenty-ninth. Uh, Darren, you want to make a report as to when, how, who, when should we meet and how we should dress and. Et cetera, et cetera.
Well, we know the event is on November twenty-ninth, so I would dress nicely. Plan for rain like we did last year.
Well, I think all of us have that shirt that, um. Ron's wearing, Ron, you want to show your shirt? Does everybody have that shirt? Oh, um, here, you have, now you have a shirt. Everybody has a shirt? All right, everybody's got a shirt now, now. Go ahead.
Yeah, so just dress appropriately for the, and you're gonna bring the.
Yeah, I'll bring, I'm gonna, okay, right after this, I'm gonna give it to you now.
Okay.
Okay, right, I have it in my car.
Okay.
The, the, uh. Banner, okay, okay. And what time do you, should we meet?
Let me find out from the meeting, once I go to the meeting, I'll get the information, I'll email it to the board.
We'll give it to us, no, what?
I don't know when it is yet.
What time, what time does the parade start? What time should we? Is it, is four-thirty enough time? So we have half an hour before the thing starts, so we should be there by four-thirty. Okay?
Yeah.
Four-thirty.
Four-thirty.
And everybody wear his NCO shirt, the black one.
Yep.
Okay.
That is? And prepare for rain, just in case.
Okay. And everybody, no, out of curiosity, how many of you will be joining us on the twenty-nine, raise your right hand? One, two, three, four, five, six. We got.
Six of us.
Brandon?
I don't know if he's here.
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, are you gonna come join us?
I'm gonna try my darndest, I'm gonna try to see if I can get the kids to be there.
Bring your, bring your twins.
We'll have to bring them in the carriers, but maybe inside my, even the front carrier kind of stuff.
Hey. Or, we got all volunteers here to take you, our kids, okay? All right, so, give you an head out, how many people, we have, many, six, I say? Yeah, okay, thank you very much, everybody, we'll see everybody then. Any questions? Vern, anything else? Thank you for coming down, I thank you for your, uh. Treat. And by the way, I did give you the trick or treat, I, everybody, I just came back from Japan, I gave you guys all a treat, that's Happy Thanksgiving. Better than chocolate, uh, and these. All right, any questions? Uh, moving right along, uh, I think where we left off was Lana Keela.
Are we, okay. Uh, passed out the newsletter. For this month. The first and foremost is there's a show and sell on October twenty-third. In the morning, it's from eight AM to ten-thirty. If you can go, please go, and the Portuguese club is the one who's sponsoring, so Portuguese bean soup. Yeah. It's the right, it's the real thing. Um. I think. Well, I, I know some of you have been to the show and sell before, it's quite a big, um. Everything from plants to food to crafts to just about anything you can think of. And what it is, is each club makes things, brings them, they sell them, and then that's the funds go to supporting the club activities, so. Uh, and speaking of that, there are seven different cultural clubs. And. I'm trying to encourage people to go and get involved. There is the Filipino Cultural Club, the Chinese, the Okinawan, the Korean Dance, the Portuguese, the Hawaiian and the Japanese. So you don't have to be of those ethnic groups to go to the clubs. You can go and learn about those ethnic groups at the clubs and they're, they have a lot of fun and they eat a lot of really good food.
Great.
So Lana Keela has over fifty places. That, uh, they're currently having, and I thought it might be interesting for some of the more. Uh, recent ones that people might be interested in, don't know, they have pickleball now. Okay, real popular, want to learn to play pickleball. Um, and then they also have, still have many of the technology classes. So whether you have an iPhone or an Android, whether you're using, um. A laptop or an iPad, they have classes for that too. And so I have, have a lot of friends who've taken those and they've really enjoyed them and they've learned a lot. And that's it.
Questions? Yes, Donald?
What was that time?
For the, um, show and sell?
Yes.
Eight-thirty to, eight AM till ten-thirty. On the twenty-third.
Great. Questions, comments? No? Audience, no? Thank you very much, Carol. Uh, let's see, Friends of the La Leha Library, Brandon, you have, uh, reported that?
No report, Chair.
Okay. Uh, any other nonprofit organizations?
Chair, Paul.
Yes.
I got one from the, I have one from the Kalii Y M C A. On October thirtieth, that's a Wednesday, from five o'clock PM to seven PM, we'll be having our trunk or treat event. Um, with a costume contest at six-thirty with prizes, so if you have, if you guys are free or if you have any youth. Who are gonna be dressing up and we invite you guys to come down to the Kalii Y M C A. October thirtieth.
Yes.
At the Kalii. At the Kalii Y M C A.
See, five to seven.
Yes, from five o'clock to seven o'clock, PM.
Okay, any other nonprofits? Okay, any other business to be transacted? If not announcements, um, there will be no November meeting because, uh, that Monday is Veterans Day. By the way, how many veterans do we have? All right. Thank you for your.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for my service. All right, um, again, the next meeting will be December ninth, two thousand twenty-four, same time, same venue. And I'm gonna wish all of you a happy Halloween. Uh, if there are no other announcements, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by Whalen. Wild, wild, Whalen, walk wild in. Seconded by Chance. Uh, all in favor, raise your right hand. No opposition? Meetings adjourned, thank you everybody for coming. Okay?